Leading dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. This time I call waiting the order and I'm starting. Like to use this to apply the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, one empire, the end of this all. Council members, you were all giving your back over the weekend. We had a little time to review and to reach out with any questions at this time. Accept the motion if anybody wants to make one to approve tonight's agenda. So thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Sullivan seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
If anybody opposed, the ayes have. Moving on to public hearings, we'll start with the agenda. I'm going to be the public hearing for two thousand twenty five delinquent utility accounts. Mr. Robie is something you want to review before we do this?
Mr. Grass coming up to the podium here for the annual process. Prior to considering the assessment of delinquent utilities to property taxes, the city council is required to hold a public hearing. We did duly notice the public hearing for tonight. From a sequence of events standpoint, we would have asked Mr. Grab to summarize the two thousand twenty five delinquent utility account status. And then request city council vote to open a public hearing. We'll hear any public comments regarding the delinquent accounts. And then vote to close the public hearing. And then if there's any further discussion, there's no action required in terms of assessing delinquency accounts tonight. That would come a later meeting.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Lee just went over, he's been giving letters out to those delinquent accounts in early September. The numbers are up there, four hundred and thirty five letters. The total balances a little over six hundred and forty nine thousand. As of last week on October ninth, that delinquent amount is now down to a little over four hundred and eighty seven thousand, which is actually a little bit less than what we're at last year at the same point in time. For reference, last year, we ultimately sent the final number of three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars to the county. So of the one ton, about a hundred thousand dollars from this point last year until closer to the end of the year that we sent to the county. Except the current four hundred and eighty seven thousand, that's about two hundred and sixteen accounts. So the summary of where we're at. I can take any questions, comments before we open the public hearing.
Thank you. Hey, council members, have any questions at all? Anybody? If not, I will entertain a motion to open up the public hearing related to the assessments of the assessments of all I thought so, two thousand twenty five delinquent utility accounts. So thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Williams, Councilmember Williams seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Do we have anybody here who wants to talk about why they're not hearing their utility bills? Doesn't seem that way.
There's nobody on that.
Nobody's on the list. So can we close this? If I may, I will accept the motion to close this public hearing. So move. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Nelson seconded. They had a discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Any discussion on that? No.
If there's any other questions, we can sort of take it at this time, as I said. We'll continue to work with customers as we do in prior years and we just got that ever dropping before November tenth.
Just to be clear, we have on the date, your taxes coming due here, property taxes coming due on October fifteenth. I wouldn't assume that there'll be more coming in after that time.
That would be unrelated to this, what would be coming in was the October fifteenth payment. It's the amounts that were certified last year. That's all I mean, but when when the next utility bills come due, then that's sometimes would be both behind a month or two. They might catch up here in October twenty sixth when the utility bills are due. But the tax dividends will be for prior previously assessed delinquent accounts.
Very good. Anybody? Thank you, Mr. Grant. We own the item four B, that'd be the public hearing on nuisance abatement, that's three twelve South Fourth Street. Mr. Robie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At times, the county has to consider ordering abatement of nuisances in town. One of the first steps to that, formerly the city council is holding a public hearing. The search police department has communicated several times with the owner of three twelve South Fourth Street here in Lister regarding business refuse and grass and weeds violations, which today remain unaddressed. And say in prior to or any order of abatement, the city must per section nine seventy nine of city code provide the property owner an opportunity to appeal the violations. As such, a public hearing was duly noticed, the notice of the public hearing was served to the property. And what I would ask city council is, unless there are any questions. Initially, we asked city council to conduct a public hearing. We don't believe we have property owner here for this property. But the public hearing will still be in order, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Robie, for that summary. For that, I will entertain a motion to open public hearing related to the nuisance violation three twelve South Fourth Street. So they count from one hundred and ten, council member Nelson seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Anybody from three twelve South Fourth here to talk about why the place is such a mess? If not, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing. So thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. So a motion was made by the mayor Kirby, seconded by councilmember Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments? Any other discussion, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have.
And just for clarification sake, for those who are calling along at home, it is in the agenda packet. Agenda item eight A will be the actual resolution for council to consider ordering the abatement of said nuisance.
This takes us on to the consent agenda. From all items on the consent agenda considered, retain have been made available to the city council of these two days in advance of meetings. These items will be enacted in one motion or we will separate discussion on these items unless the council member says this or requests. Which item? This item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Robie, do you want to review these for us?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, the consent agenda is approval of city council minutes from the September twenty second, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Next is approval of dispersments. Those dispersments are through today, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. Included in those dispersments are six items over twenty five thousand dollars. The first in three days, you'll see later on in the consent agenda, I think. The first to Lister County Highway Department, pay of number five, the two thousand twenty five street utility improvements project, one million, two hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and thirty eight dollars, forty two cents. Next, MNPA Caravan Energy, our purchase power from September twenty twenty five, totaling eight hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents. Next to Castro John, payment application number four on the North Main Street, distribution improvements project, seventy nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars and eighty three cents. Next to Bromley Excavating, payment application number three in the Zion Church Utilities Improvement Project, totaling seventy five thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars and eighty eight cents. Number five, Minnesota Department of Revenue, payment of the September twenty twenty five city sales tax, fifty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars. And finally, to Waste Management, September twenty twenty five refuse and recycling services, twenty five thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars and eighty six cents. Item C is approval of the two thousand twenty six city council and city council commission meeting calendar. This is a reminder, we do publish this in advance of next calendar year. Very clearly amendments are made, but this way all of our public meetings are noticed in advance. And D, approved resolution, R two thousand twenty five dash zero four nine, which is the designation city hall as the two thousand twenty six polling place. Because November twenty twenty six, we will have a general election. And E is approval of application, payment application number three for the Zion Church Utilities Improvement Project. Item F, approved payment application number four for the North Fourth Street Electric Distribution Improvements Project. And item G, approval payment application number five, the two thousand twenty five street utility improvement project.
Thank you, Mr. Robie. Anybody have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Anything? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve to this consent agenda. So move. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, seconded by Councilmember Schleger. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Concerns? If not, all those in favor? Everybody opposed, the ayes have. Moving on to public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public hearing? We do have somebody. Okay, you want to step up? No? You ready? Okay.
There is. It's a female. There's your name. Brad, yep. You're passing. Yes.
So he's passing. You're passing. Okay, thank you. So that takes us into sitting minutes for her update. Mr. Robie, what do you have on the forums?
As always, just a few items, Mr. Mayor. First, since we're talking about utility bills, just reminded everyone, if you have another need to please sign in for Smart Hub. And if you have any questions or if your delay is related to any nervousness or anxiousness on your part, please rest assured, state staff are willing and able to help you get your Smart Hub account set up, which comes at no additional charge to you. So please do it. Secondly, I want to acknowledge that while today is not a city designated holiday, we do celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day today, which recognizes the resilience and diversity of indigenous peoples in the United States. We had a planning commission meeting last Thursday. The primary purpose of the meeting was discussion of the future of the city forum. Just a reminder to council and the general public, will be held next Tuesday, October twenty first, at the Middle School High School, six thirty P M to nine P M. Future of the city forum is put out by the planning commission every year and discusses the future, discusses the future of the city. And this year, the focus will be the two thousand forty comprehensive plan, an overview of the comprehensive plan, what it is, what it's important, what are some of the things that have come out of the comprehensive plan. I want to thank everyone who participated in Officer Carl Huggin Bonfire Night last Friday. I want to thank the fire department, police department, the scouts, and all the volunteers and community members who showed up and supported the event. And finally, this is quite hot off the press, I haven't even told Dirk to draft this yet. But the city has been awarded a grant, the police department has been awarded a grant, one hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars to support the time and leadership of the department's sergeants overseeing the two-year accreditation process. So if council were to recall, in a year, Chief Steer came in and talked about the accreditation process that the police department is seeking to go through. We have received a federal grant that will reimburse this city for the sergeant's time and expense related to implementing the accreditation, so two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars will be paid for by the fence. That's through the U S Justice Department's Community Policing Development Grant. Our next meeting will be Monday, October twenty seventh, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Robie. Anybody have any questions regarding this update? Good work on the grant. Thank you. It's good news to hear. Appreciate that. Moving on to the regular agenda, that takes us into agenda item eight A, resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five two, nuisance abatement three twelve South Fourth. Mr. Robie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As referenced in the public hearing earlier tonight, resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five two is the specific order to declare the property of three twelve South Fourth Street to be a nuisance and ordering, ordering the abatement of the nuisance. The property again has been issued several warnings about nuisance state of the property, the lawn condition, and also missing refuge around the property that's visible from the right away. The public hearing wants the property owner's opportunity to appeal the cited violations. The property owner did not appear before city council during the public hearing. From an action standpoint, the resolution is in front of city council, which would order the abatement. The city would go and clean up the property and then submit an invoice to the property owner for the time and materials required to abate the nuisance. City council does have the option to grant additional time for the owner to come into compliance and abate the nuisance themselves. This is always an option for city council when it comes to nuisance abatement. But tonight, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution and direct city staff to abate the nuisance.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions regarding this? Everybody's had up to like some of the pictures and things probably buried by the park yourself several times a day. This time, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five two, then declare the park a three twelve South Fourth Street to be a nuisance and order abatement of said nuisance. So thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Nelson. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Cleaning up three twelve South Fourth. Thank you. Resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five one, transfer funds, Mr. Robie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of writing on this slide here, but it's all in your packet as well. Director Graff is, appreciate him coming up here to talk about the procedure here. So I'll just end over here.
Thank you. Yes, there are several funds that we are looking for almost approval to transfer dollars to and from. There are all this there in each bullet point. We do this for a few different reasons. Funds that are initially created, they're useful life ends, whether that's it was for a particular service that we were providing and we no longer do. Or it's a debt service fund in which we have paid off all the debt and there's no more activity. There's usually not even zero balance at the for those. And so to transfer those to another fund that's, if we can find some connection or relation to it, we would move it to that fund. And so that's the Noel B U subdivision, the sidewalk reconstruction fund. And the Geo Improvement Fund of two thousand and one, all kind of follow what I described there initially. The amounts are a little under eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and then a two hundred dollars. We also have for some of our more recent debt service funds for August of twenty two, December thirty six, and a lot of government mean three projects. I've looked during our audit, as we look and found, discovered this, that they were also funded in the debt service. So what we do, most of the debt that we take out comes multiple departments. So for ease of payment, we create a debt service fund that we then transfer money from the funds that are affected by the debt. You know, usually it's our utility funds and then some component is our streets for most of our projects. We transfer money to this debt service fund that we then service the debt and pay to our lender. We discovered this with our audit consultants during the audit. And the recommendation at that time was that we just bring forward a transfer resolution to council. Because we noticed that there is too much money that was sent from our utility funds as they're listed here and is sitting in the debt service fund account. So this is just to move those dollars to their appropriate fund and actively refer the balances in each of those funds. That's the summary of that. And wanted to take any questions, comments, concerns on this?
Anybody have any questions for Director Graff?
So initially, when you start to explain that these were funds that you're not using anymore, the debt was paid off. And whatever, they're not you, you're not using these, these fund accounts.
Those first two, yes.
The first ones. So these next ones, if I understand you correctly, are is just accounting tactic of moving money from a fund. Is that what you're doing? You're moving into a debt service fund?
Yes. It's a tactic, but yes, it's we plan to move money from our utility accounts because they're the utilities that are affected by the street utility improvement projects. And setting up these debt service funds is there's, there's multiple ways to handle these things. And we have set the debt service funds to make it easy to make the payments. It all just comes out of one fund instead of when the bills come in, we tow them to the, sometimes it's upwards of eight or ten different buckets. We transfer to this one, it's a little bit easier. It then adds a little bit more work on the backend. And then so we discovered where some of the backings that was duplicating. And now we want to fix that here going forward. And we might take a look at how we do the debt service fund going forward to just minimize the overfunding happening to begin with.
Okay, so this isn't money that's been sitting earning interest. This is an interest-bearing accounts or anything. It's all significant amount of money.
No, outside of the minimal amount of interest that we get in our interest checking account, which is a fraction of a percent. When we, when we borrow and get funds, we're under restrictions of, you know, we usually get rates being a government agency. So we are, we're pros with the follow that we can't reinvest them at higher rate than took the debt out for. So for the most part, we have been following the practice of any money that we give on the bottom, we just leave them checking account. And so the interest that it's earning is point four percent, I think is what it's at right now.
So yeah. Over the total, one point eight million. How long has that been overpaid or sitting in an account?
Oh, probably the beginning of twenty four. But it's, we share, we have a pooled cash accounting. So we have, we only have one bank account for the city, so it's not like we have a separate account for each of the different funds. So whether we had this money sitting in the debt service fund or we had it sitting in the utility funds, it would earn the same amount of interest either way.
Because you can't put it into a more money market or another account that would
We could, but then we would have to make sure we monitor it very closely to make sure that it doesn't exceed the interest rates that we borrowed it at. So we tend to, when we do our investments in cities and market, use that for the the cash we have on hand that's not associated to debt funds. But that helps explain it all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Robie, do you have something on that?
No, Williams. Effectively, it's an, it's an accounting transaction that whether we do it now or wait until audit needs to happen. There's, there's no money leaving an account that is simply an internal fund transfer that, as Ryan said, the debt service account, the debt service fund does not need those funds in the right now. They are permanently belonging to utility funds, which will then continue to funnel money as payments come up to the debt service account. But there's no interest lost. Again, it's, it's effectively a large scale general entry that is most appropriately, since we're doing other transfers right now between funds, this is an appropriate time to do it. Instead of waiting for audit of
Can we just go through and audit?
We did, yes. Yes, definitely.
And that's when we look at this and work with the consultants. And this was based on where we were in the audit. They said that this was how they recommended that we, we handle. So like, we said we would do it at this next coming audit or, you know, we feel that it's and based on their advice as well to do it now, especially leading into our budget season and, you know, we're going to be looking at our enterprise rates. And what we look at is what is our starting position, what is our cash position? What do we need to spend? What do we need to pay existing debt parts? And that helps us more easily see that financial position versus just knowing that, hey, we, we're going to be making this journal at the end of the year. Let's, let's do it now, so we're making sure we're looking at the right numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Anybody else? You new council members, as you know, maybe by now, anytime there's any type of a transfer of funds that comes through the city council, I'm pretty sure what some of the people have accused the administrative side of things are doing. So that's why this is being presented to us. With that, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five, one is presented. Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Second, Councilmember Schleger. Any other discussion? Comments? Concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed, the ayes have. Well, I'm sorry. My name, we have one name, that'd be Councilmember Nelson. I apologize. Thank you. Moving on. Resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five three, that'd be closing funds. Mr. Robie, then on to Mr. Grant again.
Since Mr. Grant is here, I'll let him just take it.
Yes, thank you. This is somewhat of a continuation of the part of the resolution that just passed, although we, we have had funds that have been sitting with the zero balance and have gone through the same resolution for transfers that we just went through in the past years. However, it wasn't clearly stated in those resolutions that we wanted to make these funds inactive so we can now make them inactive in our financial system and then they don't show up. Then something that reports all every fund that we have that's active and it just cleans things up a little bit. So what we have here is the, all the funds listed, and I'm not going to read them all off. But they include some that already had existing zero balances. So this is the first you're seeing of them tonight. And then the last three are the ones that were just proven in the last resolution where we were making the transfer was bringing the balance to zero. So we just want to make these inactive to kind of help make the financials easier to comprehend.
Mr. Grant, you might understand that most of these accounts you have up here, there's very little or no money in any of them, correct? They're basically closed as is.
It is based on that last resolution pass passing, essentially all of these funds have a zero balance right now. And most of them have not had activity in them for years. And we usually let that come. There's usually some expenses that follow even debt. We kind of have some reporting that there may be some fiscal agent fees that come in right when the bond is expiring. But we have no foreseeable use for some of these funding to these are kind of some organizations that we've had in the past that are no longer under the city. Or there's just no foreseeable use of these activities going forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution R two thousand twenty five dash zero five three is presented. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Second, by Councilmember Nelson. Any other discussion? Comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All eyes. Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Moving on to the last item, that would be city ordinance and city E S S T policy. Mr. Robie, you want to explain this to us?
I'll introduce it and then I will allow Director Lawrence to explain it. Thank you. Okay, very well. So let's take a look at the brief heads. Legislation and state rules amend from time to time. The city looks at making changes to our own internal policies, make sure that they're in line with state rules and regulations. And there were some changes to the statewide rules under second state time or E S S T that came out in recently that warranted an update to some of the city's policies. And Ms. Lawrence is making those updates. I was going to share that with you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Joe had summarized, there was some changing laws of legislation to the S S Joe had summarized, there was some changing laws of legislation to the S S T, most recent changes for July first. So specifically for our E S S T policy, so this is related to our full-time and part-time policy, which has one policy and our temporary and seasonal policy, which is very similar other than how things are handled upon termination. So they're very similar, but we've made following changes to both. One is just outlining usage. This was something that we had been adhering to anyway, but now we're just formally documenting it in this policy. So this just outlines the increments in which people can use the S S T. So basically, we're aligning it with how you keep your time. So you can keep your time in fifteen-minute increments. So we're aligning the use of the S S T to those same increments for exempt employees and non-exempt employees. That is changed to one hour. Additionally, we added some documentation. So this was an update from the state as well that organizations now have the ability to request documentation after an employee has spent hours for two or more days using E S S T, and it was previously free. So that is the policy essentially. Are there any questions that I can add?
Good question.
Please.
Go ahead. So what is, what's the safe part of this?
Yes, okay, so it's a relatively broad, broad categories in E S S T time. Safe typically refers to if somebody has been a victim of domestic assault or something along those lines, that you would need to take out work to attend to some personal matters to keep yourself safe or your mental wellness and well-being. To your question. Thanks.
Do you have a question about the documentation?
Please.
Specific guidelines around what that documentation should be?
Yes, so we had some discussions about this as well. So our timekeeping policy, the way that we keep time in Palacity, actually is an appropriate way for employees to document that just by enter, they can leave notes within the system saying their reasoning. And if we need to expand upon that, we can ask them for additional information. The state guidelines refer to doctor's notes, but, you know, in a situation similar that you would go to or have a medical appointment. But if it's something that you aren't going to see a doctor for, an employee can provide documentation with a simple note or an email as well, just saying why they're using it. So it's pretty broad.
Yeah, so in the case of a doc, like domestic, it could be perhaps a police report?
It could be, but it doesn't need to be.
Okay.
You could specify that yourself, and we would need to accept it.
Anybody else? I'll take your other questions. Thank you, Director Lawrence. With that, if there's no other question, I will accept the motion to approve the updated form, current times burn, sick and safe time policy in January. The seasonal burn, sick time and safe time policy as presented. So moved. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Nelson, thank you. Seconded. Any other discussion? Comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, the ayes have it? Moving on to reports and items of appreciation, councilmembers, as your team should call or commission with some of the community, as always, so with Councilmember Hey.
I'm good, definitely.
Certainly, Councilmember Nelson.
Oh, yeah, I'm noticing all the yard signs that are out there, the little yellow ones. And the large, slightly larger green ones. I've had a lot of people talking to me about the property taxes and that vote and sharing their concerns. And making suggestions on what we could do to lower our taxes or costs within our city. So I've been hearing a lot. Are you, I just want to know if anyone else do?
Yeah.
I've, I've heard quite a bit. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Schlier.
I attended a Lusor County officials meeting on the twenty fourth, region nine full board meeting on the eighth, planning commission meeting on the ninth, and as Administrator Roby mentioned earlier, the future of the city forum is on October twenty first at six thirty at the high school. I hope we have good attendance.
Sorry, tell me what is that again, October twenty first? Thank you. Thank you, Detective. Moving on to Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to say huge thanks to the city staff who worked on the bonfire night last Friday at the fire department. The weather was perfect. There was a good turnout, and the kids had a lot of fun that I saw.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. On to Councilmember Sullivan. Nothing to make. Councilmember Williams.
People have a H R E meeting tomorrow, and I just want to comment about the community coming out for the bonfire, the Marion Patrick big management, Bill Anderson, and the Giants night out. It's nice to see the community coming out supporting itself in positive ways.
Question, is H R E tomorrow or is it Wednesday?
Well, Wednesday.
Okay, sorry.
When it always is, okay?
Our calendar is off, bud. That's all.
Thank you, and I attended a puts you on budget meeting tonight along with Councilmember Sullivan and Williams, and we continue to work hard on these issues, the yard signs and trying to lower the taxes. Big news tonight, they came down a little bit more, so we're, we're working at things. We're below that five percent now, so. We're going to continue to forge ahead, and we have another couple months before we need to blow on that. Thank you very much. I have nothing else to share other than I would entertain a motion to dismiss tonight's meeting. So moved. All those in favor?